Good evening. And this evening we did not have a closed session, so there's nothing to report. So I want you to go ahead and open up the city council meeting in a second. And the first order of business is to stand and join the march.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, um, city clerk wrote off the --
Yes.
All right, council members, Connie Williams, Jim Gerbente, Matt Hopkins, Mark Plummer, Kurt Segre, Speaker Chris Hare, Administrator Kim Miller. Our interim city engineer is Austin, Attorney Douglas White.
Here.
Administrative, uh, excuse me, Fire Chief Amy New, here. Acting Police Chief Tiber Van Der Wiel.
Here.
Community Development Director Cheryl Kelly.
Here.
And the city clerk's report on the agenda posting.
At noon on the 38th day of March, um, the agenda was supposed to be outside City Hall for the Republican Union.
A poll of the agenda, is there anything that the council would like to have changed for school or at? Seeing none, then we'll move on to presentations, which this evening we have none. Item E is public comment. This is for non-agenda items. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on the subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Is there anyone who would like to address the council on non-agenda item? Please come to the podium.
I was kind of surprised this agenda was a little sparse because I've suggested several things to be on the agenda. City Council has never taken up the issue of parking. We keep tarking it to the merchants' community. And then I thought the pet waste stations were going to be on the agenda and they're not. And I don't see anything giving like trash recycling, which I recall has not been on the city council agenda. That's also been trolled to the merchants' meetings several times. And I don't see anything on here about dog food also, which we also need to discuss, as well as all the bomb agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Greg Popovich. I had a experience the other day that was kind of nice. I know we've been talking about homeless populations. And thanks, there was a gentleman, I was at one of the local shopping centers, and a gentleman fell down, he's an older gentleman, went over backwards, fell, cut his hand, wiped up all his bones and things like that. And a homeless gentleman came by and gave me a hand patching him up and actually getting him to where he was stable and could go on with his drive to the hospital. Um, and that was touching to me. It was actually something that, that, um, touched on a number of items that have been happening lately. And it doesn't quite cover for the other population of homeless that have been terrorizing my building and my tenants. Basically, what's happened over the past, let's say, year, it started last year when I, some people were carrying some water jugs, very thirsty. I said, hey, you know what, I got a stick in the back, let's go call a few jugs and things like that. Next thing I know, they were showering back there. Next thing I know, there's lots of bottles everywhere. So I locked it off. They ripped my pipes out of the wall and basically helped them chomp through the water. So we had to cut the pipes off at the ceiling. Then it went on to breaking of the windows. Each of those panes of windows are $800, so I've now been through five of them. And they go to the, but it's not retaliation against me, they don't know me from out. They just walk up, they decide they're going to terrorize the thrift store or the Hyatt Bonn store or whatever, start pushing on the windows, banging on windows and breaking them off. So it goes a little bit more than that, to where the other day at 5:00 AM, I was sitting down at the bay area. I'm taking a lot of my business out of the county right now, unfortunately, for various reasons. And on my drive, I looked and there were six foot flames coming from the front line building. I called the fire department, I called the police department. And they said it was probably a transit with a warming fire. I said, that's fine, Dan, you can come put it out. And they agreed to come put it out. Uh, they built a right, my bushes caught bushes on fire. Luckily didn't get the building, but it's getting to be very, very detrimental to, to this area. Next thing that comes up is a piece of property that I have, they've decided to build a homeless camp on. I've called the police department a number of times and they've been wonderful, absolutely fantastic to go out there with me. Now, most of you know me, I'm not afraid of much of anything, but for me to be concerned about going out on my own piece of property because of homeless out there on my property that have their dogs, their, their whatever, I'm getting very concerned that this is going on way too far. We removed them, they moved up to a different part of the property. I removed them, they moved to another part of the property. Last time we had the police out, luckily the person that was just walking in circles talking to himself had already left. And it was very, that's a great conversation, kind of being in the police, but it was still kind of disenchanted. So I guess what I'm trying to say is there's a part of this population that truly is homeless and needs help. And there's a large part of this population that decides to be homeless. And from their decision, it's causing a lot of people that decide to work, which I decided to do, um, problems. And so I know that a lot of these people, a lot of the homeless have reasons, you know, legitimate reasons, some can't work, but the ones that can, maybe we can figure out some type of a program or something to put them to work. But if we could please somehow empower the police to do their job and to not have to be so delicate, is to be politically correct on every stance they have to take and remove these people from the private properties that they decide to camp on or put the ordinances in place that will not allow it to make it a problem, get these people out of here and remove them, it sure would be nice for the local business owners because it's getting more and more and more difficult. You can go downtown on the beautiful art nights and things like that to not find somebody tweaking and making a difference of themselves. So, um, like I said, I wanted to start that off saying that there is a population out there that is wonderful and need help and truly want help. We need to help them. The others, we need to get rid of them.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to the concept calendar. Items on the concept calendar are considered routine and will be voted on in one motion unless a council member or member of the public has a question or wishes to discuss an item. In that case, the item will be removed from the concept calendar and considered separately. Item number one is approval of the following meeting minutes. City council closed session meeting of March 19th, 9:18. City council open session meeting of March 19th, 9:18. Item number two is approval of invoices of previously budgeted expenses by April 3rd, 9:18. Item number three is approval of disbursements in the amount of $134,111 in $40 cents on March 30th, 2018 for payroll, inclusive of employee salaries, employer and employee taxes, and retirement contributions, and miscellaneous voluntary employee deductions.
Move to room. Second.
Any other discussion? Any public comments? I'll break back to the council for a call on favor, Todd, Pasadena. Item G is unfinished business, this evening we have none. Item H is public care, this evening we have none. So we'll move on to new business. Item number one is consideration of the draft TCEPA, that's Quality Economic Development of the --
Yes, ma'am. There is a council. This is the type of year to receive a draft budget from the TCEPA for consideration to your adopt or not, based maybe that, uh, consider for your fiscal year next budget. The budget that's been forwarded to you from the board has total cost of $460,732, the same amount of last year. The city's contribution, the ratio that, if you might, is something around 23 percent, equates to a contribution amount of $102,841. You have a note from the executive officer, the Economic Development Authority, as well as the draft budget in the packet, and the TCEPA board has recommended approval of the budget as proposed. I did receive today a letter from Schicken Perkins that provided copies to the council , some four pages of length, um, with questions about the budget and definitely recommendations to council not endorse it. If you can certainly have that review, I'm going to provide a copy of the letter. There are some additional copies available for those of you that may want a copy. I'm not sure if you want to, how you might want to address that, but let's take comments from the director first and then discuss the letter if you said that you want to.
Good evening, Mr. Clark.
Good evening, thank you for having me up here today. It's a little loud, so let me turn this back here a little bit. Um, in front of you is our, and proposed budget for fiscal year 2019. It is the same budget that you approved last year. We did arrange some of the expansion categories as we were able to add cost savings in certain areas and we were able to allocate those to other areas. But the bottom line of those two numbers end up being the exact same request that we had last year for both the city and the county. Most of the adjustments that we had were at the recommendation of Debbie Batista on our clerk, making sure we allocate the correct funds into the right line item within our budget. We follow accounting, accounting system, so we try to make sure we match up as we go through every year to make sure that we're matching what they currently use in the account. In addition to today's budget, I also have included our brief annual report that we have put together to kind of talk about some of the things that we've worked on this past year. And primarily, I am here today to answer any questions that you may have and seek your endorsement for this budget. If this budget was so to be endorsed and approved by this council, then what would happen would be we would then have our budget hearing on May 11th. And then at that point, all of our budget would be considered approved at least for our organization. You guys would still incorporate it through your staff into your final budget numbers. And there'd also be the availability to adjust those numbers when you file on your budget, much as the county has that same availability to do that. So for the benefit, primarily just to answer questions, submit this formally and then ask if there's any changes or requests that you'd like to see. I will tell you that the board, the TCEPA board approved unanimously. That board does consist of two members of this council. In addition to, we were also endorsed unanimously at the board supervisors about a month ago after that hearing.
Any questions from the council to Mr. Clark at this time?
Here.
Okay, all right. I'm going to go ahead and ask for, it seems like we don't have any questions right at this moment, so I'm going to go ahead and ask for any comment. Okay, if anybody would like to come up and, uh, so public comment on this agenda item. So you mean Mr. Gager?
I'm here, Mr. Clark. Brief comments, while you're already finished, I was just going to report. On behalf of Board Chairman John Bray, couldn't be here this evening, as I said, so I'm just here to say in part of what the lawyer said, the board supervisor unanimously endorsed the budget for today. And John wanted me to convey to you, certainly encourage you to pass, pass on this budget endorsement as the board supervisors has and to continue support work established by our partnership. And that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to come up and address the council on this agenda? I will.
Hello, my name is Sean Flynn with TechCode, we're a global incubator chain. We have sixteen locations throughout the world, mostly in China, but in Mountain View we have a location where I am based at. Recently, we've started working with Larry, building a relationship outside of Mountain View itself, he's the only economic developer that we have a relationship with. And it seems that it's, it's going to lead in the right directions based on companies in our incubator, we house them until a certain time when they expand past our means and have to go and do facilities. And one of the biggest problems with Silicon Valley area, it's housing cost, pricing and that. And this area here, it's a nice solution. So I just wanted to mention everyone, the outreach area has been doing it and hopefully exactly the years ago.
And could you, excuse me, could you describe what your business is?
Oh, uh, so we're a incubators, we house early-stage companies, mostly seed to Series A. And what I mean by that is they range normally between $40,000 to $4 million, even though in our facilities, we do have some unicorns from other countries that have housed their, their U.S. entities with us. So for example, TouchPal, it's a Chinese unicorn, they're a billion-dollar company, they have a team of four in our facility. And what we do is we provide services and introductions for them. So when they come to be marketed, an early-stage company, they don't have time or the resources to find lawyers, accountants, any of those types of resources, partners, investors. So they come to us and we make those introductions for them. We help them meet with potential partners, potential investors, give them a better chance to succeed. So our big value is going into other markets. So if it's an Israel company where we have a location there, Silicon Valley, or Seoul, maybe here or here in Chengdu or Shanghai, that, that's what we do. So we work with them to get them to the next stage. Any other questions?
So, so to be fair to say you're not venture capitalists per se, you're more of a facilitator.
So we have a Chinese fund, a U.S. entity, we do not have our own fund. For, for us, though, we make introductions to angel groups. So right now, we have several angel groups that have meetings at our facility. We have an event April 6th, eight different angel groups in the Bay Area that will be at that event. We also have very good connections with micro VCs and sub VCs themselves. So outside of China, it's mostly introductions to investors. Inside of China, it's direct investment.
And the name of your company again is?
Oh, we're TechCode, T-E-C-A, C-O-P-E, or in Chinese, Thai. Our headquarters in Beijing, we're back by the second largest land development company in China.
Thank you for coming.
Good evening, Mountain View. And council members, my name is Kurt Park. I am the Director of Valleys Sierra Small Business Development Center. And with the assistance of city staff as well as TCEPA, we are operating our Small Business Development Center program in Palm County. It has been operating up here through several different integrations since 1986. Without the collaboration of both the city and the TCEPA, it would be very difficult for us to have access to and to have the ability to reach a number of entrepreneurs, both existing businesses and people wanting to start a business than we do last year. Just to give you an example, our SBA-funded program, the allocation from the federal government is based on population. Palm County represents about 7.7% of our service area population. Last year, we, 12% of our total clients were in Palm County. We have six exceptionally well-experienced, wise consultants currently working, living and working in Palm County. And we are looking forward to continuing to work with TCEPA and the city to expand the program even further this year and feel very confident we'll be able to do so. And just for full disclosure, we do have a $10,000 a year contract with TCEPA to do business outreach within both the city and the county. And to date, beginning that contract roughly the first of this year, we have visited with 107 business owners, existing business owners to date. And of that number, four are free within the city of Samar. And we hope to double that by end of next month. Now, if the weather is here and our consultants are going to get out and do a lot more business business. So thank you very much.
Good evening, Ron Cobb, I'm the Executive Director of Palm County Business Council. And we would also like to encourage you to approve this budget. Working with Larry, we find that, you know, his outreach and his information that we can provide to the different businesses is very beneficial to this overall area and the overall economic development of this area. A lot of new businesses come to town, they have a place, they can do a lot of the one-stop shopping and get a lot of the questions answered. And if Larry can answer those questions, then he has a great network of people that he can reach out to to get these questions answered. So we, our membership is founded as Palm County Economic Development Authority, it would be very beneficial for our overall economic development. We'd like to see them keep doing so. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mayor and council members. My name is Aaron, associate representative of Pacific Industries here from the Sonora Division. I came up here and spoke last year endorsing Larry. This past year, we completed our $10 million turbine project, steam turbine generator that wouldn't have been possible without Palm County economic development and Larry Co. And I would really like to urge you to approve the budget so we can continue to do large projects and reinvest in the community and further employ citizens here.
Hi, my name is Andy Singh. I'm one of our co-CEO by high school. I'm talking about next door food project. We finalized the franchisee with the help of TCEPA Department, Larry Co. Without his help, it cannot be possible. The franchisee is one of the top five franchisees in the United States. And not even finalize the food franchisee, he helped me with financial institution to get the loan and other stuff. This is what we give $2.5 million dollar project. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Phillips and I am one of the consultants locally here with E-Valley Sierra Small Business Development Center. And I'm one of the people doing the business outreach program that has been funded through the TCEPA. I just wanted to tell you how important it's been and how, um, how beneficial I think it's been to the local merchants to get their feedback on, you know, both the TCEPA, on business in general, and making sure that feedback gets back to whether it's city council, to Larry himself, or to us consultants. It's been really, really great. And I also wanted to say that Larry personally helped me start my business a couple of years ago, took the time to do that for me, which was very beneficial to me in getting started with my next chapter of life. So I hope that you endorse this budget. Thank you.
Tiffany, I have a question for you.
That's George. What's your say?
On this program, many contact with the business folks in Sonora and Way Har, in the county. What have you found to be their biggest issue at this point? Can you point to something?
Um, well, so I've been hyper-focused on downtown. My biggest feedback is lack of parking. Lack of tourism has hurt the business locally especially. So, you know, dependency on the winter weather, unfortunately, has hurt a lot of businesses locally. Um, I have a lot of good feedback that I would love to share with you guys if you'd ever be open to sitting down with me.
Look, I'm sure we'll be seeing, seeing the report.
Yes, I, yeah, and I, I just started the business outreach, um, I think it was a week and a half ago. So I'm just kind of digging into it. I'll have a lot more feedback to give to you guys in my reports. I think you guys will find me very useful.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comments?
Well, I want to speak on behalf of the TCEPA, Larry Co. And I know there's a particular public person who's been quite the naysayer, and I think we've had six, maybe seven letters to the editor, and then you've got one tonight. But if anyone has questions about the TCEPA and how they, that their board chooses to run that agency, then that person needs to come before the TCEPA board. And there's only one member of the public that I'm accustomed to seeing at any of those meetings, and it is not the writer of that letter. So I have never seen that person at the TCEPA meeting, and that's the perfect place to raise those questions, not before the city council. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Kearns, I'm pretty somebody tall downtown here. I just wanted to put my two cents worth in for your approval of continued support of Tom or Larry's group. And they've done a wonderful job, they've worked with a lot of their clients, and he's doing a wonderful job, he really is, and we're very blessed to have him. And so I just hope that you continue to support him. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, then I'll go back to the council. And, uh, and we'll see if any of the council members have any questions for Mr. Clark.
Well, just mainly, I just, for me, a comment on that with Larry, was it Thursday?
It was Thursday.
I really appreciate, I mean, he went over everything, including me pinpointing you on things, and you had the answers right away. Your character speaks for itself coming from everyone else. You know, you know you're a wonderful addition to the community. We appreciate you, I know as a council member working with you, I appreciate you and we're fortunate and happy. Thank you.
Who wants to go first?
Let me lie to you. I'm all well.
Councilor, say anything.
Larry, we've mentioned several times about this business outreach program that we've got working on that was approved by the board. Can you let the folks know a little bit more about what that program is supposed to do?
Uh, yeah, what, it was a program we set up, it's kind of an extension of our existing business retention and expansion program. With such a small office that we have, it's difficult for us to get out and visit every business. And with us being pulled in multiple directions, as we've been over the years, from everything from kind of rebuilding from the recession, going to red fire, doing all this other stuff, taking over Central Sierra, our times were very limited. So when we then focused, started focusing on attraction of higher-wage jobs, we also continued to want to do business retention and expansion. We have continued to do that with our large manufacturers that bring well-paying, good-paying jobs, our hospitals, stuff like that, that bring good jobs to the community. But we just don't, didn't have enough time to get out and visit every business, and there's only so many items to visit within a day. So with that, we came up with a program where we would partner with the Small Business Development Center. We actually set it up as an RFQ, so it didn't have to be the Small Business Development Center. It could have been the store, it could have been a group out of the nest, so it could have been anywhere. But they happened to win the bid, and on that bid, they agreed to go out and reach out to all the business owners in every downtown in Palm County with, towards a first focus on Sonora and Jamestown and then expanding out from there. In fact, the numbers that they lay out, you can see Sonora has had the most visits at all time with Jamestown and Rose and Palm. And what they do is they go out and they individually visit with the businesses and they sit down with them, take a few minutes and ask them what their issues are that they're having running the businesses. It could be anything from, um, issues with getting people in the front door, it could be capital, it could be regulations. And without us knowing what those issues are, we don't know what our, what is killing our businesses. And some are doing very well, some are doing, or having a rough time. If we can get in and help them before it gets too late, then we can hopefully turn those businesses around and it'll be a successful business. There will be some businesses that's too late because they have to run their capital, because they got a big bad business plan when they started, maybe they have the wrong location, they got into the wrong thing to sell, you know, so on and so forth. There's so many different things that can affect a small, small business. And whereas if you have a national business, they have the capital to be able to make a mistake and adjust. You make one or two mistakes in a small business, you're basically out of business, as you know, being a small business owner. So with that, the goal is to reach out to every business in every downtown, including Tubal Town, which has one business, but to reach out to every -- Uh, but to reach out to every town, from Strawberry, Grohlman, to Chinese Camp, to Plumton, and try to reach out to each one of those. We did put those dollars back in for this year to renew this contract, uh, so that they can continue that outreach program. It has already, um, gave us a couple, it's given us some data on what's happening with our existing businesses. But also, I've already received at least one and on two, what we call bad phone calls. Basically, it's when a counselor thinks a business is going to go out pretty quick. And so, rather than going through the process of, let's report that, and I get that report in thirty days, that consultant contacts me directly. I then turn around and contact that business owner, and we basically form a team around that individual, depending on what their issues are. And so, if it's capital, we try to find capital for them, whether it's a bank or some kind of unique lender like, uh, Access Plus Capital, or the county's revolving loan fund that happens to be out in the county. So, that's kind of an outhole program once. And the goal is to outreach to all the businesses that we can, and then circle back around and reach out to them again, because it will probably take about a year to get to every one of the businesses.
You, you answered my second question, which is going to be, um, if you've come across a business that has an issue, whatever the issue may be, where does that issue go to? Does it come back to your office, if you see it for a report? You indicated that if it's a major issue, you're going to get that response almost immediately.
And it goes only to me, it doesn't go to my staff, it goes immediately to me, so I can address the issue, if possible.
Good evening, you're coming? I think that the objective and mission of the TCEPA is exactly what we need off the city. I, I've been viewed as negative about it, and I still feel that we got orange-macquered in the last budget. But, I have spoken with quite a few of your ardent supporters. The one part that I really have a hard time with though is that, basically, almost everybody, anti-posting support, comes up with, well, there's no measurable way to really see where we're spending almost half a million dollars. I said, that's the county and, um, the city. And, because we're supported by our staff, and what I have learned subsequent to, over the last year, I intend to vote for your budget, but I would plead with you to come up with something a little more concrete than what we've got here, which is measurable outcome of just businesses' contact. There must be some better way that you can see for yourself, that have metrics, that we can say, okay, this is going to be done. If, if we're getting a, you know, 200% return on investment, we'll go borrow money to give you more of it. But, I could go out and say, I contacted 500 businesses. How about, why don't you pay me the same amount of money? I, I realize that you're a professional in this, but it would be really nice to have some metrics. And I would really like you to come up with something a little more concrete than, well, he's creating a business environment that is favorable. Is that possible?
A couple of things, just so you know, the measurable outcome is actually set by my board. So, I think that needs to be a discussion that you have with your board members who sit on board. But with that measurable outcome though, it is one of those in economic development that's very difficult. How much influence should we have on any one project? As you've heard from some of the individuals, we were in the mud, and, you know, um, I know at least on Andy's project, and Andy has left, but Andy's project is that we made the initial contact with who he's working with right now to go in there. So, without TCEPA in that loop, it would have never happened. Whereas, because we made that connection of Person A and Person B together, and Person A and Person B now are working together and doing the two and a half million dollar investment. Other times, it's more subtle. Maybe it is business X that needs, uh, capital. So, then we pair them up with, um, one of the SBDC, or sorry, one of the SBA 504 loan officers, or we get them with Martin Syken, um, Bank of Stockton, or Brian Adcox at Wells Fargo, or wherever we can find capital for them. We made that connection, but again, it's one of those things, how much do you want us to claim on? Also, it's never us creating the jobs. The only job I've ever created, and actually it was county and city that created it, was my assistant's job. All the other jobs are created by businesses. And if we start claiming that we made this job happen, or we made this investment, that's old school, that's smooth stat chasing. Um, these days, we influence those type of policies. So, it's very difficult to, how do you measure influence compared to how do you measure? I mean, I could be an economic developer like what we have, and through three different parts of California, you want to say, wow, you know, um, X firm came into the community and created 5,000 jobs. Well, I could easily say claim for that, but I won't, because my own personality will not let, let me take claim for something that may have, uh, may have influenced, but they're still making the capital investments, they're still making the choice to create the jobs, they're taking the risk, we're not. We're just trying to make it easier for them to take the risk, we're trying to remove barriers. That's really difficult to count. It's not by counting how many permits do we have, or how many tickets per issue, or how many, um, sales, um, happen in downtown to, um, business licenses. It would be much like the city claiming that because of all the businesses that they try to help in downtown, we created 100 million dollars worth of sales in downtown. No, those businesses created 100 million dollars worth of sales. So, it's very difficult, so, but I, I would say if you have questions, I suggest that we can sit down. I also suggest that we talk with the board, because the board is actually the one that outlines this.
Well, I, I have spoken with a different mill representative who probably has enough seniority to have value. They said that you were incredibly helpful in, in assisting on the project and coming back in. Not that it wouldn't have happened without you, but that it made it a lot easier, that you had a great deal of value for it. And I've tried to do my homework and find out more about how, how you're helping the county and the city, and how we can measure what you're doing. Because like, I, I supported, I think the best way to help the city financially is to have good-paying jobs in the county, light industry, other things that will come in, where that, a great deal of that money will get spent downtown, or in the, within the city limits, and that helps all of us. But, the, the vagueness of success or failure is, is very difficult for me.
Okay.
Yeah, or that, you're ahead of me.
Couple of things in, in response to Mark. I've had, um, opportunity to sit in for the mayor and a couple of TCEPA meetings. And it's very much the, we talked about measurables. It was very clear to me that it was a board decision and a board direction on how the measurables are or aren't being done. So, I don't want Larry, I don't want you to think that it's, I mean, it's all coming from Larry. It's definitely coming from the rest of the board as well. It was very clear to me. One thing, uh, one kind of measurable, and it's not really measurable, but measurable aside certainly, is to take a look to see, um, how our downtown is doing, or how our city is doing in respect to other areas downtowns, Ingers Camp, so on. And, um, just by going through, I've seen that it certainly seems our downtown is doing better than Ingers Camp. And, um, although it's not really on the same scale because it's larger community, I, I was shocked to go to downtown Verset, um, last week, and, uh, or two weeks ago, and just see the, the number of word about downtown, no businesses, or whatever. So, I think, even though there isn't really a measurable there, um, uh, um, there, I mean, there's a site measurable that you can see that we can compare our downtown and, and, you know, places out of the areas. And, uh, so far, I've seen, I've seen ours with the, much more aggressive economy. The letter from Mr. Perkins, um, it's kind of interesting that it kind of came at the very end, right at the year of the meeting, and I don't know, Larry, you probably just got it now, didn't you?
Yeah, glancing at it, uh, it really looks like all of his prior letters to the, to the editor put together.
Okay.
So, you might forget a copy this while you're going to the Union Democrats.
I've kind of gone through it as I've been standing here for the first part of the meeting, and, um, some of the things that he asked, um, you do provide, um, when we met a couple of weeks ago. And some of the issues of where, what, how many jobs are being created, and, you know, what kind of returns in investment, stuff like that. I'm not saying that Mr. Perkins doesn't have some, um, there may be some areas where he has, um, could possibly may, but, um, from what I've seen in here so far, um, there's nothing that I've heard, that I've seen from, from, uh, the information that you've given us, we didn't mean it, you know, that would make me say, you know, no, it's incorrect, or, or Mr. Perkins, you may be right, or whatever. I do agree with the staff's, um, point that he's had ample opportunity to come to, if I'm not mistaken, he's actually been invited to come to TCEPA meetings to, to engage in some sort of dialogue, and he has to come. So, I'm really not quite understanding where all this is coming from on his part. And I think that's it for my comments.
Uh, I have two questions, and, uh, the first one is, when, when, uh, when the representatives go out and talk to the businesses, where are they going to be? Do they have a set of questions, do they have to ask everybody, or is it just kind of an open-handed conversation?
There's introductory questions, and we also have Curtis come up and talk a few lines, but they're introductory questions. Uh, but we try not to have a very set ten or fifteen questions, because everyone's situation is difficult. So, you don't want to try to answer the other twenty-seven questions, or the other ten questions, that number two is the most important, or number seven is the most important. We try to primarily aim on how's business, um, you know, is it, are you making profit? Are you profitable? Are you lacking, you know, access to capital? Are you, you know, is growth being hindered due to the amount of capital that you have? You could do so much more if you had another $50,000 line of credit that you could extend. And so, different components like that are the, the initial questions. Generally, it's, um, how are you doing? Um, how has things been over the past year? How are employees? Are you having employee hiring issues? Do you have employees at all? Uh, do you need capital? And each one of those questions then leads to either other questions or partners, that they're having workforce, workforce issues and need workforce help. And hence why they're automatically dialed over to somebody that can help them at the level of job training center. They may need help in hiring individuals, they may just need help, and they need a place to be able to post their jobs. So, depending on the question, it kind of runs us out.
And when did the, did the project begin?
Uh, because of contractual stuff we had to go through, things had to run, we believed the department, the whole nine yards with us, it started, um, the contract was signed, I believe, around December 22nd, and the work began around January 1st, carrying up the individuals.
And in the contract, is there a end date for, for the first piece of this?
Yes, uh, it, it's a year-to-year contract, it's renewable. So, if this project was to be approved, we would modify our contract at our May meeting to extend the contract for one more year. So, we always look at every year, you know, do we have the finances to do it? And so, what will happen is we'll go to the May 11th meeting. By that time, uh, Curtis will have some more numbers for us, we can kind of, again, gauge where the project is going. The deadline for this year's is June 31st, um, and we'll get a final report after that. But he'll give us kind of a little bit of a status update, or at least give it to me, and I'll hear it before, on May 11th.
Well, as we all know, the city is, you know, is very, uh, small business. And, uh, so, and so it's very important, as far as, um, other opportunities that could become available. Um, I've sat down with you recently and talked about where are opportunities that could be developed? And, uh, we'd love to have a hotel, we'd love to have several different things. And hopefully, uh, somebody's going to fall in love with us and want to, um, to come here. And maybe, um, someone from the general, uh, that came from Mountain View would decide that, that this is the place that they would be. And the last thing that I'll say is just a comment, because our general plan, um, states, like, their, um, economic development, the goals, policies, and implementation programs, that, uh, to, to continue to provide financial assistance to, to support economic development. We don't have any economic development that we're somewhere, because economic development is what generates the taxes, it keeps, um, us, the city, um, in the mode of being able to provide the services. So, um, that's my final statement. Okay. Any other special comments by the council?
I'll just make one more comment, uh, because this has been overlooked for a long time. It doesn't impact Sonora specifically, uh, usually, although we do sit on the board. And that's the Central Sierra Economic Development, uh, Board of Directors. That is a combination of several counties and cities, uh, in the political areas. And it was an organization that was almost bankrupt, okay, not almost, it was bankrupt. And fortunately, Larry came on board here with the city of the county at a time when they needed some destruction to, to do in the next few years. Larry was instrumental in putting all that together. Thank you for doing that. It is now a prosperous, uh, ongoing economic development community effort. And, uh, I hope that that will be true too, but Larry was, I know he was long with all that together.
And I'll make a comment on that. The one thing I want people to understand about that is being run by a level of job training now, and I do know Mr. Perkins, uh, references the Central Sierra a number of times through here, is that it's now being run by the level of job training, uh, they partnered up since they're both regional entities. But, we were able to save that organization at no extra cost to the city of Sonora, the county of Walman, and make revenue off of it that subsidize our budget for a number of years. So, in addition to not only saving it, we were able to save costs to both, um, the city and the county, in addition to, in not only the way of savings within our budget, so we could keep our budget lower than what it would have normally been, it was also, there was a participat, participatian fee to be part of that. And we have the largest pieces. We eat those within our budget. And so, with that, it was additional savings to both the city and the county the entire five years we ran.
I wonder what they are going to say based upon the council member, Paul or whatever. And since, uh, Councilmember Segreani and I both sit on the TCEPA board, it might be worth a discussion about variables, to see if there's something additional that could be quantified, uh, that, um, in the future. So, maybe that's a discussion that would be good, critical.
And can I believe we can? And the thing is, we can measure a ton of stuff. It's just what is our influence on that? I can measure unemployment, I can measure tax revenues, I can measure all that. But what influence do we have is really important, I'm going to make that decision.
Thank you. All right. Cool, um, that comment, we answered our question, so, Ron, next step is motion.
Hi, Mayor, I'll move that the, uh, Sonora City Council approves the RAP TCEPA fiscal year 2019 budget.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Going to call to the vote, Paul Baker, passing, Jim Evans. Item number two of new business is consideration of the recommendation of the vision Sonora should make to permanently close light industry. to permanently close Lineburg Street and possible direction to city staff for implementation subject to environmental review and up to the overall staff for.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is the council and the audience. Tonight, my intent is the discussion of the recommendation that comes from the Vision Sonora Committee. In September of last year, you authorized the design committee to supplement the Vision Sonora Committee for structural improvement planning if they were able to deal with funding from the city. We frankly have had several times over the past few months to discuss whether the temporary closure of Lineburg and brought forward a plan, their recommendation to the Vision Sonora Committee, which has recommended to the council, how the council pursued during the closure of Lineburg. Attached to the November 20th period is a note from the Community Development Director summarizing that action as well as minutes from that meeting. Tonight we've scheduled a presentation by our representative of the Vision Sonora Design Committee to present their plan to you, but the direction at the conclusion of that presentation served one solicit public comment. There's a number of written correspondence that we received for review with the council. What we do at the closure discussion, you're not in a position to approve the closure this evening. Staff needs your direction if you want to move forward so we can take the necessary implementation steps, which does include conducting an environmental review. So you will not be making a final decision about the closure, but will be based on your last request of the committee considering a plan. If you want to move forward that plan, the staff needs that direction from you.
All right. So at this time, at this juncture, we'll go ahead and have a presentation.
Sorry, it's hard for you guys to see. I'm on the wall here, but you guys can see that I'm here. I think I can speak up. Okay, I can speak up. So I'm on the Vision Sonora Design Review Committee and we put together this presentation for you and for the council. So Lineburg, how are the possibilities? Sorry. Here we go. Okay. So why close Lineburg Street? These are the reasons we came up with. To bridge between Stewart Street and the downtown parking lots to Washington Street. To make downtown more walkable, which was one of the things that people in the Vision Sonora Plan really wanted. Opportunity for outdoor art, a location for community to take a minute to chill out, to get off the highway, and a venue for outdoor events. Economically, I found this on a website, having a more walkable environment is good for business. The presence of sidewalks and other walking facilities is shown to increase property value and to promote tourism. Sidewalks and connected well-witted pedestrian networks allow citizens the ability to safely and conveniently patronize local shops, businesses, and restaurants. So what would we propose in the possibility of closing Lineburg Street permanently would be shade, art and lighting, barriers, some kind of a floor surface, and some furniture. So to start with, we'll talk about shade. Ideally, it would be trees. This is something that we're really lacking downtown. We used to have trees up and down Washington Street and they came in, they died, I believe, and they had to all be removed and they were never replaced. And now there are, we believe there are water pipes and things like that under there. So it makes it difficult to try to put trees on Washington. So this is an opportunity to have some shade. So we would suggest live trees in pots or maybe trees in the ground if that's possible. These trees would be chosen for their drought tolerance, their shade benefits, and their durabilities. And we, actually, the design review committee got together with
Master gardeners.
Master gardeners, thank you. And we have this awesome list that has, you know, recommended plants for our area as well as trees. So we've already done some homework on that and we would be going to that list to choose the proper shade trees. Then art and lighting. Art, great public art reveals its meaning over time, rewarding and repeated visits. Beyond all that, public art has the distinct ability to add beauty to our shared environment, commemorate, memorialize, and celebrate, and to transport us, if only momentarily add to our daily routine. Public art is for everyone and it is free. Many people don't visit museums or attend the theater, but anybody can experience public art. So we would propose a mural on the diamond back haydie block wall. It's really ugly. I don't know if you've seen it. And one idea, and this isn't set in stone, but I would love to see, we as a community would love to see the use of some of the beautiful iron doors that they have that are distinctive to our, our community mounted on the haydie block wall and then have like a picture window of history inside each of those, those doors. And then painting faux bricks or rock similar to the other side of the wall and, and the faux plants as well. So that looks, could look something like that if you were to imagine. Now, take in mind that I did all these pictures. I'm not a professional, but hopefully you get the idea. We said we wanted to say, say anyway. So then for art, I mean for lighting, excuse me. I don't know if any of you have ever seen it before, but up on the top of the wall on Lineburg on the north side, that we have the tie rods that hold the building together. And uniquely on this particular building, it spells out the word Lineburg. And we would love to restore that in some way to make it so that it's something that you do see. And over one of them is an old light there. You can see on the left. And that's an original old historical light. So it would be awesome if maybe we could put one of those and have one of our metalworkers create them to go over each of the letters. So we think that would be an awesome way to use our history and bring some light to the street and then also string some light across as well. We also have those in Coffin Park if you have them. Barriers. This is a hard one. So last year, we closed Lineburg Street to do the Lineburg Art Mart every second Saturday, as well as the taproom had some bands and things there. And the best we could do legally, we had to put up these lovely road closure signs. So it would be great if we could do something that looks better than that. So being that it would be permanent, it would be easier than something that you have to put in and take out. So when we did Lineburg Art Mart last year, we had to install everything at 5:00 and take it out by 8:00 and it was very labor intensive. So we were talking about historical artifacts as some kind of a barrier. A one idea was those ballers, but they are very historical. So maybe that wouldn't be a good choice. This is something that could, we don't know exactly. But we could do shade trees and that would be really easy in pots. We could easily do that, you know, right within the summer. And then a floor. Keeping in mind that it has to be ADA comfortable. It could be stem-succinated, it could be stamped concrete, it could be brick pavers, it could be any combination of those. It could be marble. Somebody said marble and I thought, oh, that would be awesome. If somebody could donate marble pavers that we could do, something like that. Right now there's a sidewalk there and we've heard that there's stuff under there. So we would probably have to leave the sidewalk, but it could be seating. You can sit there when there's a band playing. And there's also a little half wall, a stem wall on the haydie block side. We would probably leave that as well. It also has seating. So furniture. It would be nice to have a place to sit and have a picnic. There's really no place besides down in Coffin Park, which there is a place there too. But one idea would be having some kind of a, something around those potter trees as a possibility, something that was permanent there, something that nobody would walk off with. And also you can't sleep on that. So when finished, the alley could look something like this. And once again, remember, this is just my way to draw it so you can see. Pottery trees for barriers, the mural wall, lights over the top. We talked about putting in a curb and the kind of upside of that is that we would maybe gain some parking. We could gain two, maybe three parking spaces. So that's definitely a plus. Then our barriers aren't quite as important because no cars are going to pop the curb basically. But that, that's something down the road. We could start with the trees now and we're probably towards that. But that gives you kind of an idea of what it could look like. And so the conclusion is, the purpose of this presentation is to help the members of the Vision Sonora Committee, which I've already presented that this to them, the city council and the communities, the possibilities and choices and opportunities to bring the Lineburg alley to fruition. And I just want to say that I had a talk with Mary Ann recently about downtown and so she really enlightened me to something that I thought was really important was there was a time when everything that was made downtown was from things you found downtown or you found in our area. And those are the things that all of us are attracted to now and we appreciate and we want to take care of the historical things. So keeping that in mind, when we do this, we want to be using local things. We're not going to be importing anything and definitely keeping materials and histories and all of that. So that's my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Lehman. Okay. Any questions or comments by the council? And how many of you would like to comment on this agenda item? Would you raise your hand? Okay, great. All right. So I'm going to go ahead and open up, open up the floor for, how many comment? Please come up to the, I'm sorry. Please come up to the podium and let's do three minutes for each person. And if somebody already said what you're thinking, just say, I agree with that and not go into a long dissertation about the same thing. And then that will get, will get it. So whoever would like to come up first, head to the podium.
My name is Mary Ann Wright and I used to own tar plan entities. So now I'm on Cross Street and 64 North Washington, working on Serbent's saloon. I hope to get that open by the summer. And first of all, this is going to sound kind of negative, but it's silly. You'll think that we're losing something so that you'll want to spend money to make this nice. So that's kind of, because it's just true. Okay. Because drivers will lose access onto North Washington Street from Stewart Street via Lineburg, I feel this may deter some customers that didn't want to drive around to the light during heavy weekday traffic. As we know, most traffic congesting Washington Street is just passing through. Those using Lineburg may actually be looking for parking or need to change directions. Even if half of those of the 200 via the study were shoppers, although this may be a small loss, I feel that if the city council decides to agree to constructing a park, as a merchant, I ask that enough time is allowed, Vision Sonora designers and enough money is allocated to Vision Sonora designers so that the space can be done quality, built using some of the local materials similar to other handcrafted structures within the historic corridor door that have been done in the past, to purchase large enough trees. I also ask that the restroom be completed as soon as possible on Stewart Street so that when they have large events, the patrons of the park can be accommodated. Thank you very much. Mary Ann.
Next.
Okay, I'll just say a couple of personal things. So I've been on the design review committee since the very beginning, working on maybe shovel ready projects when money becomes available. And I have to admit that this has been my most favorite project and the one that I hold most gears to my heart that I'd love to see happen. And it was also the one that the community wanted. It was one of the highest rated projects in the Vision Sonora reports. So keeping that in mind. And then to reiterate that we did do second Saturday Lineburg Art Mart there. It was very challenging. And as I mentioned before, living things in and out, so it would be really nice if it was something that was just always there. People loved it when it was there. And I'd like to say that I don't foresee spending any tax dollars on a project like this. I really see this as being a community project. We did the mural in a day project and that was all funded by fundraising, large sums of money. I pictured the bureau being an arts alliance collaboration. I picture the trees being something that we get from our local nurseries and furniture maybe from local metalworkers. So I really don't see that we have to spend tax dollars. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hi, David Axelrod. I'm a local businessman down on the street in the practice of law. And I almost didn't come tonight because number one, it starts at a non-godly time of 5:00 p.m. where I'm usually at store work. So just a general process question, point would be, be good to have especially meetings, especially public meetings such as this one, at a time outside the general nine to five when most people work so that they can get home and get out here. Another reason I almost didn't come was that I agree with the idea. So there's probably a lot of people that didn't show up because they said, good, they don't object. People usually show up when they disagree with something. And I think it is a good idea. One reason is that I know that Lineburg has been dangerous because people are looking left and then they turn right and they run over pedestrians. I know that because I had a case like that. So I haven't released one time, but I think it's happened other times. And when I ever, I stopped taking that road for that reason. There's enough view from a car, depending on what kind of car you have, to really get a good line of sight as to where are the pedestrians and where are cars coming. People don't really expect me to come out of that road, Lineburg, which really is an alleyway. Further question would be, why not close Lineburg west of Washington Street? I noticed the last time I came down Bradford, I noticed Lineburg was closed where it meets Bradford. So that could be a further idea. But sticking with the question for the council tonight, just a few random thoughts. I think it's a good idea. It creates a great opportunity for user development and of course, community control through the city council. And I agree with what the Vision Sonora person, the representative said about, we can do it at low cost by using user development. There are many creative people, as you know, in the city of Sonora and around, around the whole area as far as Calveras County or Mariposa County that would come in and be happy to participate. I would
Thirty seconds, Mr. Axelrod.
Okay. Okay. We're going quickly. Native shrubs and trees should be used hopefully in the ground, but in pots could be a temporary way. I've done that myself to where they were in pots and then they did root. And native plants like tory pine, but especially native plants of the Sierra. User development, art could also conclude sculpture. There are many fine sculptures, especially at Columbia College. And one more thing I wanted to say was that it might be good to keep the curb cut so that emergency vehicles can get there easier, fire trucks, police cars, and also band equipment and artists that may be setting up and just paint it, paint the curb red. That would be my suggestion. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Katie Fisher. I'm relatively new out here, but I'm very happily employed at the Sonora Tap Room. Neither of my bosses, unfortunately, the owners of the taproom could make it tonight. So I wanted to come and show their support. They're very enthusiastically in support of this idea. All of the wonderful things you said, bringing art and community, bringing time and space. It's going to bring business, not just for us, but for the whole area, as I think you know. So I really wanted to come. I wanted to show their support. I wanted to express the extreme support I've seen as a bartender, talking to everyone that comes in, wants to see that. I would suggest the permanent closure. As we see already, since you've been closing it for second Saturdays, people come and they're disappointed that we're not doing they're disappointed that we're not doing that tonight. They're like, "I thought we had this space." People are already disappointed that we don't have that consistency and we don't have that space for them. I agree with everything, especially the safety. Lots of people are already using that as a pedestrian roadway. See people, literally hanging out there, walking down the street with their dogs. They're not on the sidewalks, because it feels like an alleyway. Feels like something that already belongs to people. So I think it's a great idea and I just wanted to show some of my support. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is B.C. Smith, property owner in downtown Sonora, and a longtime advocate and worker for Second Saturday Art Night. And I was involved in some of the early closures of Linenburg Street, in fact, even prior to doing the Second Saturday Art Night market. John Williams and I worked together to close Linenburg Street, East Linenburg, for a couple of street concerts that we had before we had the Second Saturday Art Night markets for during art night. Forgive me for being a fumble mouth tonight. I'm so sorry. I have one comment that I'd like to share from Mark Endicott with his permission. He's the longtime owner of Benjamin Fink, lovely in your shop in Sonora that's now open for 41 years. And he said, he wanted to just, he's at work, so he couldn't be here. One of his comments was, he lived in Eugene, Oregon, when this exact same thing was done, and how vibrant the impulse was within the community and how he's still in touch with a lot of the people who live there and how they're still really, really grateful. And 41, you know, some years later, since he left Eugene, that alleyway that was created back then is still a really vibrant part of the city and is a drawing card to the community for its, the space that it has created. And I also just want to make a quick comment in thanks and appreciation to all of the hardworking people on the Vision Sonora Committee, particularly Lloyd Lemon, who have devoted so much of their time and energy and tenacity to hopefully to see this project through fruition. So I would pledge for your support to take it to this step, so that we can go on to see where we can go further with it. So thank you so much for your time and commitment to the city of Sonora.
Thank you, Heather. My name is Shannon Arias, from here, Russell, the 12th County Committee. Please give serious consideration closing East Linenburg Street permanently. I agree, our committee agrees with all the presentations that were made and we want to support that. We think of this street that is so well used as a public venue to add social vitality and attractiveness to our historic area. Although the 12th County Committee doesn't agree with all of the recommendations in the Vision Sonora plan, we know this good idea predates the plan and the plan is merely incorporating what your own general plan had in it for many, many years. In conclusion, since I would like to get done within three minutes, we have a wonderful opportunity to add beautification to historic downtown Sonora and give the public a valuable space for activities that will enhance commercial life and will make the queen of the Southern mind even more real.
Mary Ann, I'm a young professional in the community, have more in race here, clubs. I agree with everything she said. The one thing as a young adult that I crave in downtown is the cultivation of outdoor atmosphere. I'm pretty passionate about it. I do love to travel. I'm willing to go to the city, small, big, or otherwise. The things that stick out to me are these cute little niches and nooks and where the city comes through and people can hang out and gather, have a beer or listen to music or see art or just be in a space that's comfortable and the city, the city can face you through. So I hope.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Jeanne Rosen and I'm a local artist, but I'm actually not here to talk about art tonight, because everybody else has said it very well. Also what Donna said, being a young businessperson in 12th County, we want to keep the young businesspeople in 12th County. We want to bring more young business to 12th County. I've been in business for 30 some years in 12th County and I struggled as a young business in 12th County for many, many years. And what we need is a vibrant, changing, evolving downtown community. And this is part of it, to enhance it and to grow with it and to experience the fact that we love our history, we honor it, but we also understand that we will not continue if we don't enhance and grow with the times and help our young businesspeople grow as they evolve and bring in their kind of customers that they need as well as supporting our history. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Elena Winham. I own the historic Brenner Palm on Linenburg Street. I read the paper here, I've heard that Mary Ann said we should close the road permanently because it would be simpler than turning it into a convertible street. This isn't an either or proposition. There is a third option, and that's to leave it alone and keep it as a roadway. Once you back Linenburg Street, there will be a thousand foot stretch between Bradford and Turp Streets before you can drive east to west of the downtown. It will have a major impact on the congestion and circulation of the downtown. This will be even more complicated if you continue with your plan to make Washington Street a one-way street. And why does the city insist on using design consultants with no understanding of traffic in a business district? This traffic study was done on a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, primarily the busiest days in the downtown. Why decide this street closure based on an unrealistic measure of our business workday and traffic? Well, everyone tells us that we need to close Linenburg to make the downtown more walkable. I stood at the corner of Linenburg and Washington Streets and I asked 100 people, "Do you think downtown Sonora is walkable?" 99 out of 100 people said yes, the downtown is walkable, so you don't have to close Linenburg Street. We already achieved that goal. I have a coworker who wants to see Linenburg closed because she wants to dance on it, to which I say she's not dancing there right now. And she's not dancing there at 3:00 a.m. And I know she's not dancing at 6:30 in the morning because she struggles to get up on time to get to work and eat. But I guarantee you that there are cars on Linenburg all those hours. I know this because I can see the stretch of the roadway from my kitchen window from the house that I own. It's a busy little street. We're told by Vision Sonora Committee that closing Linenburg will add two, possibly three more parking spaces to the downtown. Not if you plan to keep the crosswalks. I've faced the opening by my best estimate. The space would not allow parking if you need to meet the required setbacks for the crosswalks.
Thirty seconds, Lloyd.
Taking out the crosswalks won't make the town more walkable. And why goes without adding parking when you've closed 26 spaces on the Green Street lot for Doug Kennedy's beer hall? And Vision Sonora is eliminating 40 parking spaces to create an additional park on the lot where the farmer's market is held between Stewart, next to Stewart and Linenburg. What everyone tells us that this will bring economic development to the downtown.
House.
Thank you. We reject this idea and tell the loss of the downtown. I'd add my three comments to you that have been done and familiar. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Jeff Currie, business owner downtown. I agree with Elena, most of what she said. I just hate to see that thousand foot stretch put in there where we can't make a shortcut across Washington Street. We can still do the murals and I think it's a great idea. What we do now, when we close it down for events, works great and totally endorse that. But I just hate to see a permanent closure for the traffic issue, the traffic issues. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Colette Sunch. I'm a resident of Sonora. I am a property owner of Sonora. I drive on Linenburg Street every single day. I choose Linenburg Street even if I'm going north, because I think it's a beautiful street and I think it would make a beautiful public walkway. So I, although it's the street that I choose to take, I even support its closing. There's a unquote that was written out of University of Oregon in Eugene called A Paddling Language. And it's an architectural guide and it talks about public walk spaces are the things that make communities. It's a huge, it's a really important part of making a community. So please, I vote that you vote for this. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Hi, my name is Bree Ferguson. I'm another somewhat young professional and live here in downtown. We go to the taproom frequently and we walk to downtown, but we're supposed not to do that. So downtown, once you get to Washington, is very walkable. Linen's not so much. Perhaps that's what some of the people that wrote into Vision Sonora and they were talking about making it more walkable. But I do think Linenburg being closed, I agree with everything Donna said. I agree with everything everyone has said that's in favor of it. We are too. I just wanted to add that we also drive downtown and I have used Linenburg. My husband uses that route to commute to the Bay Area as a shortcut and has said many times, he would be thrilled to have it closed. So he won't come up and say that himself, but I did want to just put that in, that many drivers, myself and a few others that I know, would prefer to have a beautiful, walkable, outdoor space to hang, to see, to make Sonora feel like a place you want to stop and hang out and not just walk through or drive through. And I think closing Linenburg would do that. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tyra Miller. I live up off of Hope and Lions. And I want to do it, I agree with everybody that what they've said, but I wanted to add one thing. My grandchildren and I were walking on the sidewalk on Linenburg one day and there was a backup on Stewart for the stop sign and one of the cars decided he didn't want to wait, so he screeched into Linenburg and almost hit us on this tiny sidewalk. So the safety issue in that tiny little alley is families, young families with children wanting to walk through there. It's really not a very safe place, even with the sidewalk, because some of those cars come down there awfully fast. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to?
My name is Evelyn Thompson. I've lived in Myers over 29 years. I'm a homeowner and I'm in favor of closing. And I have a feeling there's a number of people who are not going to come up here and I wonder if they want to raise their hand. I would say that they're in favor. Yeah, great. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to come up to the podium and speak? Please come ahead.
My name is Leslie and I came tonight with no preconceived idea. I didn't really know about the street being closed. I just wanted to see what was going on. I've been very informed. One thing that I would like to say is that if this does go forward, sometimes I go to other cities and they have little quaint alleyways, they're covered so that they're accessible during storms or rain. And I think that that might be something that we could all enjoy when downtown.
Anyone else? See, no one. I'm going to bring you back to the council. And I want to reiterate that this evening, the council is not voting on whether to permanently close this street. The council is going to be giving direction to staff based upon the next piece of the process that needs to be done, and that's the environmental review. We have to have that before we can vote on any type of closure. So I just want to make everybody aware of that. Additionally, we received several letters and I would like for a city clerk to read those into the record, please. This is from, is that okay?
And they just become part of, maybe they've become part of the record by being submitted. It is not required that we use the name.
There are the names of people or?
They can give the names, but they're not given in support of the opposition.
That's what I was going to say. Okay. Joanne Miller in support. Harry Oles in support. Erin Callahan in support. Mark Endicott in support. Mindy Calvert in support. Deborah Hart in support. Lauren Harley Kruger in support. And Neil B. Goohew in support. And Paul Boway is not in support. He does not support it. Thank you. Kristen Crownover in support.
So there were a couple of letters thrown. Kind of in support of, not in support. Do you have copies? I'll sit out if you want to pick up a copy of the letters.
Thank you all for your comments and I'll bring it back to the council at this time. Please go ahead with the mail letters that would like to go to the council. So it's in the council's hands now. So any questions or comments, by the council?
Okay, everyone's right a second. Please go to the first one. So what we're deciding tonight is strictly the environmental part of it or are we talking about designing as well? Do you root for that?
Staff, if you're going to proceed with the project, you need to direct staff to prepare the environmental review and come back to you with the implementation steps that we need to take to actually adopt the project.
Just environmental, is what you're saying.
We need to do environmental before you can approve the project.
So the direction tonight could be whether or not we're supposed to move to the next step of preparing, of doing the environmental review. That's what we should authorize.
Do we have an opportunity at some point to discuss, not necessarily tonight, but to discuss design? Fund design?
If you could go further, could you expand upon what is included in our general review for the policy, so they understand?
Well, the, we need to assess the physical impacts of the project on the environment. So to the extent that aesthetics are positively or negatively impacted by what's being proposed, to the extent that traffic circulation is impacted, which we have studied and the conclusion that was, that it's not significant, to the extent... So there's a list of categories or physical attributes that we have to look at, is there impact on sewer or water, utility services, any of those categories. So most of those will be no impact, and maybe some mitigation that comes out of the review that only do adopt as part of the project. But the council previously only directed a plan to be prepared, not conduct an environmental review, so you cannot be positioned to adopt a project without the environmental clearance. In respect, at one level, whether it's exempt or there's a negative declaration, whether there's an EIR, so we have to prepare the level of environmental review appropriate to the type of project. And I ask you what else to do, doesn't it matter? For this kind of study, some even range at $35,000, and there's funds in our economic development fund that we can use to pay for that. We do it between the staff and our onsite consultant.
Councilmember Segre?
Yeah, it's obvious that most of the, the majority of the community actually supports this closing of the alley or the street that we're going to be calling. However, there are some concerns that I have, cost of the environmental study, the line, because I didn't know what that involved. The traffic issue, I was traveling down Washington Streets Saturday afternoon about 1:00. The street was congested, there were cars entering Washington Street from the east side of Washington Street, and almost every street, including Lionburg, and that's how congested things were, and that was taking place, and that was without the high school, of course, being involved in some of the traffic. So there is, there is use of that, although it's not a major street for traffic, there is some use of the traffic. I'm concerned about cost of maintenance. If we do approve this and we get things in place like trees and furniture, et cetera, that's going to need to be maintained by the city, and so I would like maybe to see an estimate of what that might be. Of course, we don't know that until we know what we're going to put into it, so I don't know what comes first in that regard, the cost. I'm also concerned about having an area that in downtown the homeless might find inviting. I know that finishes that don't accommodate sleeping, or supposedly don't accommodate sleeping. I've seen them sleep in pretty odd places, and that may be a possibility. So there are still concerns that I have in regards to Lionburg closing. I don't have any problem approving it for the environmental study, and I'll give a similar explanation, perhaps answer some of my questions.
Councilmember Hawke?
I'm going to go for it then. I like it. I like it a lot. And the newspaper, the article that came out, it was Saturday that it came out, quoted as a 4-1 vote, and I want to explain that really quick because it didn't quite come out right the last time I voted on this. I felt at the time the council wasn't putting enough teeth in it to want to close it, and I voted against that because I want to see it closed, but it's not because Matt wants to see it closed, it's because I'm getting letters, phone calls, ringing in the people, "Hey, when are we going to get this done?", that sort of thing. So that is my belief, that we need to just make it happen, let's go ahead and do it, and we're going to make things happen downtown by closing the street off. I walk downtown all the time, I've been almost hit a couple times, I've already been hit by a car once in my life, I don't need it again. So that part I would like to see. One of the reasons I would like to see it closed is because I do feel it is a danger, especially when you're trying to turn right and people are walking and you can't see because you've got this giant ugly wall, ugly wall right there that you can't see if you're left. So, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing this move forward. So, and I love what the art community is doing. I have no artistic ability whatsoever, so any time I see art, I appreciate it that much more.
If you'd like to say anything, all of you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. My, I like it myself, and I find it refreshing, find something that personally might be attractive to have such overwhelming public support. But I've spoken with some, like with two of the three immediately adjacent shop owners, and their biggest concerns are that it be clean and attractive, and that's something that I think we really need to think about in going forward, that partly will be the design committee, how they design things so that it maybe is attractive but not great for sleeping on or under, that type of thing. But those are all issues that we can deal with, and we just have to have a will to do so. If we end up with Sonora being something closer to, when I was a youth in Spain, where you went out and walked downtown, walked around the block of Mallory, and saw a people you knew, it was really cool. I don't think we'll probably go back to that, but having an outdoor evening community, a sense of community and a sense of just getting out, enjoying, running into people you know, I think that's incredibly valuable and hard to put a price on if it's achievable. Thank you.
Well, I am supportive because it's what the community that was involved in putting together the Vision Sonora Plan suggested over and over again, so, but tonight, we're not voting on that. What we're doing is we're giving direction to staff to move forward with the environmental review, so just closing down the motion on that first, and then we'll discuss this idea.
I have no problem making the motion, trying to pick out a shit word. So move to approve the recommendation of the Vision Sonora Committee to permanently close Lionburg? No. That's why, like I said, I want to do a rant, so. Move to... Last line of the memorandum. Yeah. Before we move to environmental... There we go. Move to direct staff to prepare the necessary environmental review, for the necessary environmental review for Lionburg Street. Yes, that's affirmative. I'm terrified of this.
Okay. We have a motion.
My concerns are, I just want to say that my concerns are along the lines of George's. There are, it's nice to have a nice walkway, it's easy to walk or anything, but, you know, there are other issues, the money for maintenance, the money for early getting point for people who may not want to gather there, but we don't have the power to get out of that. So, and there's a couple of design issues that I am concerned with as well, but oh no, you know, so I don't, I think we need to be mindful of the ramifications that can happen from closing it, so. But that being said, there's, I'm voting for a review.
And I'll, since you're already voting, I'm going to call and vote. All in favor of staff moving forward in environmental review? I'm here at the top. We can't sleep.
Sorry.
Right. We'll move on now. I'm Jay, monthly reports is here, we have none. I'm Jay, is the Vision Sonora Committee report. We have no report this evening. We received at our binders a business license activity for January 1st and March, and is there any comments or questions about the business activity? Then we'll move on to councilmember department head's report. Having dialed, was started with, after people... Ms. Cowall, anything from the community services department?
No, I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Ms. New, how about the fire department? Attorney Chief Edgewell, police department? Don't tell us we have crime.
This is good news. Actually, our newest officer is Ashley Brando. She's being recognized tomorrow as board supervisors for her contribution to victims' rights. She is selected based on her, you know, response to calls for domestic violence, her thorough investigations, and her compassion shown to victims of violent crimes. So in her short period of time, she's already been recognized, so I just wanted to share that with you all tonight.
So you can be back here. Okay, let's see. Mr. White, anything from our attorney?
Nothing.
Mr. Baylor?
No, thank you.
Mr. Councilman, uh, Mayor James, anything from you? I don't think so, thank you. Councilmember Hawkins?
Yes, Friday, went down and took a tour of the Lambert Center, and knew about half of our local homes that were there, and just got to walk around and see a nice store, and I recommend it for anyone that is interested. It's got a really good setup, really, really, really nice setup.
Mr. Quonter?
Nothing especially important, except that if we, if we are shortly due, I can make it to the, or anybody else who wants to commit it to the Wood Center, and donate until 7:00 p.m. I'm going to try and make that available.
Okay. You may make it if not, they might be open to it as well. No? Okay. Mayor Lieutenant Garibaldi, anything to say?
Yeah, we had a, our homeless task force meeting didn't occur on the 22nd because of all the weather issues and the power outages. So, what, meeting again on 12th? Oh, meeting again on 12th, yes, okay. And then, Matt LaFleur, as I mentioned on Wednesday, the 28th, also that day had a meeting with the mayor and some representatives from ATCA and the county supervisor regarding, talking about homeless issues, and there may be something coming from that that brings another county in to the picture, I guess, in my side. So stay tuned on that, and I think that's it.
Councilmember Segre?
I have two things. One is that I wanted to let the council know that in conjunction with its Wyoming County Vision Bureau, Channel 7, HGOTV, is doing a Wyoming County Tourism film, and the Vision Bureau asked me if I would participate in the Vision Sonora Peace Summit, so we did that last, I think it was last Thursday. And then the other thing I attended was the Welcome Home Vietnam Vets evening out of Blackwell Casino. It was a Sohow event. It was very honoring to those who have served, and anyone in his audience that served during that time, thank you very much for your service, and if you didn't serve during the Vietnam War, thank you for any of the wars that we've had, and your service to our community and to our nation. And on that, oh, one other thing, on, just so the council knows, the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Give Someone a Chance, the Shalpas, is April the 18th, and it's at 11:30 in the morning. It's taking place at the Sierra Bible Church, and there will be representatives there from the PentaX office, the Bigwolken Berry Hills office, supervisor Handel will be there, the sheriff will be there, and our active police chief will be there. So if anybody would like to participate, it is the 18th at 11:30 at the... Thank you. Here's the, a piece of information about the new centers. Thank you very much, and we'll see you the next afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.